The ladder. And maybe that'll work the business.
Coming from the county attorney, coming from the county attorney to county commissioners? Because my ladders aren't working. Well.
Technically, since it's a separate issue, you'll have to ask your board if it's okay to hire Ted.
Correct, and that's what I'm gonna do.
And they don't have to come to us because it's totally different, but I understand, appreciate if you want.
I didn't want to present to my board if it wasn't something that was supposed to start with, so I'm just kinda going down my checklist here, so. And I know you're a participant, so you said I don't have time to do it, I understand, I'll move on, but I gotta have a starting point to get some of this, this property's been in action for several years, so. Ted, are you interested in it?
If you want me to send the letter, I mean, I don't need to do an engagement there for that, a separate engagement for that. You need the boards to reply, I'll be able to send.
And I can get you all the information, what we sent, what we got.
Right.
Okay.
Please, sir.
Okay. And if you have to, talk to your board and ask Ted from there. Okay, and if you guys have time today, if you want us to go down by twenty-six sixty cord wrapper, squatters, I spoke about in other meetings. That, that issue is what we're dealing with in the county area.
That's the one where they're loading the camper?
Yes, and there's, I think, sixteen vehicles, so we've.
Sixteen vehicles?
Yep.
I go by the other.
They're out the trees and they come in my office, ask for a temporary camper permit, and I said, no, it's not zoned for that, there's no water, no sewage, no, there's not a maybe, and two weeks later, they started. Yes.
And she's got a conflict with this one, too?
No, we're working on this one, this one is actually getting ready to go to court. So the only one we have conflict diventures is the bird property owner. This one has been ongoing issue for, I now have the state involved, I have I D M. There's a lot of issues, it's just right outside of town.
Behind the U A W building.
Yep, yep, so if you drive by, you'll see what we get to deal with every day, so.
I remember driving by there years ago with my wife. Because it was a mess back then.
There's several of them, but there's a lot of people that live there that are trying to, you know, do the right thing, and they keep their property cleaned up, and then they have to look out their back door at this, so.
I had a gentleman at work, he delivered stuff when I was at that position, and he, we do anything about this, he says, I just bought this house, I remodeled it, it's in my budget, the fuel replaced, the neighbors are in it.
And we can't, we get the right county position in place to where it's a step-by-step process and we get it all.
I don't think we can work on it.
Okay, thank you, guys, I appreciate it.
Hey, we're ready for it here. Thank you for waiting so long for us.
Oh, I feel like this is pretty important, so, but the refreshing part is, I'm not gonna ask for any money.
Oh, well, they're about to come.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know how many of you are familiar with wreaths across America, but that's why I'm here today on behalf of the Legion Auxiliary. We want to be the main sponsor of this this year. And I'm just asking for permission to put five, at least five wreaths around the courthouse. One on each corner of the monument, and one at the cannon. These will be purchased by the Auxiliary. We also will be putting notice out that if any individual was to buy one, that would be all right, too. If you buy five, you are considered a sponsor. You can purchase one, which they're only fifteen dollars a piece, and they are large ones, they're fresh greenery. They will be going up December seventeenth, twenty-two, and then they will be taken down after Christmas, and we will be responsible for taking these down. If individuals buy them, purchase them for their, to remember their veterans, they will be responsible for placing them on the graveside and removing the wreath. We're not gonna do that. Working previously in the V A office, I know how hard it is to get people to put slides on the graves at Memorial Time. So we didn't wanna do this for the wreaths across America either. But these are mainly to remember our vets, honor our vets, and to teach people about the veterans and what they do. Being part of the Legion Auxiliary, that is what we do. The Auxiliary promotes the Legion and helps the Legion, so that's really all I'm asking for today, is permission to put them around the courthouse.
I got no problem, you just can't put the stake in the yard.
They just, I, my impression is they just lean up against something. There's no stakes, no tripods, no nothing. I may be wrong, if I am, I will come back and approach you, but.
I don't think we care long, this is not stuck in the ground immediately until.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
Well, yeah, we're gonna have some pretty big wins if we set up.
I picked up the ones on the courthouse last time they had wreaths around them, I stopped, I said, I gotta go pick them up.
What'd you say, did you say December seventeenth?
Yeah.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, please say aye.
It is approved.
Thank you very much.
And if, if people buy them, then they, you would deliver them to.
No, they will have to pick them up. That is one thing, that when I was working in the V A office, I was hoping that I could have them delivered here, like, out on that side of the courthouse. And, but people will have to come and pick them up. And no, I'm not gonna deliver them.
Can't merge the Legion?
That's where I'm planning on doing it now, yeah.
That's a good spot.
I have to go, yeah, but I have to approach the Legion now. When I was working here at the courthouse, it was, would've been easy, but, you know, I'm not working here now, so. Well, thank you, I did enjoy my eleven years.
You're already retired?
Yeah, nice to hear.
I'm already retired. I'm home doing nothing and loving it. Yes, you are. Okay, thanks, guys.
Erica.
As you guys know, I'm Erica, this is Owen Lucas. I do animal control, as well as I am the president and founder of DART, which is Domestic Animal Rescue Team. So for today, I'm not gonna let him speak, let Owen speak, as DART, and me as animal control, that way there's separation, because they are two separate things. Currently, right now, I'm having some problems with the animals in Carroll County, because there's nowhere to go. There's, I mean, I say nowhere to go, there's nowhere to go. I pick up an animal and, it used to be Crystal Creek, but now, they shut down, even for, New County shut down, they're only doing their own, watching dogs for, uh. Yeah, just watching dogs, they want to watch dogs for. And then we start using the vets offices. The vets no longer will hold dogs for the county at all. They won't hold the dogs, they won't do any of that at all. I've called Wayside, I've called, you know, all our current kind of vets, nobody will do that. So I, what I do typically as animal patrol, there's twenty-three pages of all of the Indiana dog rescue groups. I start calling all our surrounding counties about, I say, call all the surrounding counties about, you know, hey, can you guys hold our dogs, take our dogs? Can you guys, you know, about these two dogs, can you guys take this dog? No, you can't, no, we can't, no, we can't take this out of county, no, we can't take this. And so I'm stuck. And so then where I go with it, I ended up usually just keeping with DART. And I, I, I'm trying, I sit down for days, and it takes a long time, it's twenty-three pages here of these people trying to get, try to find a rescue for them. And I'm not sure what to do at this, at this point, but I'm gonna go ahead and let him take over for the, the DART side of it.
Yeah, so, within the last two to three months, DART has taken in approximately twenty animals from Carroll County Animal Control. With that being said, DART is having to take care of these animals, which comes at a cost from us, and right now, we're fully funded by donations, which have not been funded in lately. With that being said, Animal Control has nowhere else to take these animal, animals. With Erica, has been called, has called every surrounding county, each time she picks up a dog, and they have their room. Therefore, the reason I'm coming before you guys is because the county, or we need some help. I mean, because dogs are just running loose, I mean, she has nowhere else to take them. Um, this county has an abundance of animals running at large, people needing to surrender their animals. Other surrounding counties have a humane society or animal control building or a place to house these animals for temporary use. Carroll County is the only county that doesn't have a facility to hold animals, with our counties around us, Clinton, Clinton County, all the rest of the counties around us have a place to hold their animals with them from Animal Control. Speaking from experience, I've been with the Humane Society in Clinton County since two thousand fourteen. It is not an ideal situation to euthanize a dog after their five days. So, in past times, after five days, nobody can take them, she's been stuck in a position where she's gonna either have to euthanize them, or keep them at her house, which she's right now doing. So, after that five days, if we euthanize, we're gonna be considered a kill type of department, may I say? My request to you is to provide funds to DART to help pay for the cost of these animal control animals, or invest into a temporary or permanent housing, or a building, or something for Erica to be able to take these animals. Because at this point, when she picks up an animal, she's having to, within hours, try to find a place to put it. And right now, it's not an ideal situation to keep them all at her house, because she's, it's her house, I mean, that's just.
Just to verify, I have not had to put any, I've only had to, I do my best not to euthanize any animals, I think it's only been one, and I, and that felt, killed me, and I, but I won't do it. I, I just, that is why I am trying my best, and I've worked with, we are five oh one C three. So I don't wanna be a kill software, I don't wanna do that at all. And so I'm trying my best to do whatever we can. And I've traveled on my own time, on my own, you know, this, the DART or whatever, once it's almost past five days, I've traveled, been a couple hours away to get to a different shelter here. The one, one's like, one's open, you know, we have nothing around here. And I, it is new, a one week, I mean.
Where is, where is this DART located right now?
Well, currently, we're trying to get the trailer ready to go. But the trailer, that donated to us, the thirty-three foot camper trailer, they're trying to modify into a animal rescue trailer. Was originally, my original, my original, um, fleet was supposed to have kind of a red cross theme on for this trailer, so you can go on scenes and wear that. And have like a DART mobile and DART home eventually. However, with that being said, we've only, we've gotten a, some funds coming in, we've got it stripped down, and working on getting it remodeled. When the funds come in, my, our funds are going to Carroll County animals, instead of remodeling our trailer. And that trailer to be, is going to be climate controlled. But with all those funds that are coming in, are going to the Carroll County animals, and not, not, not them to take care of our, you know, it's kind of, I'm gonna be in stuff with that.
So, let me give an explanation here, so you're using the funds that you get from DART to take care of the animal control animals after their.
After five days. After five days, after five days of the holding, of the vital holding for the animal control, six to five days to.
And then to the DART.
Yes, and they, they come, so, so. How, how it works is if I take a dog in, and let's say that Crystal Creek or Animal Patrol, or, sorry, Almost Home wants to take a dog for us and hold it, the very first day. After those five days, nobody claims that dog, then it becomes their, their shelter dog, yes. So, they're all saying no to us. I, I call these people, and I call these people, and I, can you help me, can you help me, can you help me? And they'll tell me no. So then, I don't have the heart for them now.
I, I was just checking about the funding, I'm sorry.
So, yeah, so once it, so once that five days is up, you know, I, I have to, I have, I've gotta do something, I gotta take care of these dogs, I can't.
So where are you, where are you storing the dogs now, since the trailer's not functioning?
They're with me.
That's your house?
They're with me, yep, I.
Are you violating any town ordinance by having more?
You're gonna ask me that, and technically, in Delphi, there's no ordinance, there's zoning ordinance, there's zoning ordinances, but if that's camera. So, I've already cleaned up, every dog has, has all the shots and everything, but, I mean, there's, there's no, no town ordinance as far as that you won't.
I guess no one's seen you get in trouble.
I, to my best, to not have all that, you know, it's why I asked.
My next question, Sheriff. What has the department done to ratify the situation?
Well, as you've heard, our options are very limited.
Right.
Ideas I have in mind are that, unfortunately, we may have to suspend the countywide animal control program and not be able to place animals. And/or, or, or, obviously, leave it that way. The county potentially enter into a contract, some sort of legal contract with DART, to alleviate some of our problems with these strays. As it stands, as a sheriff, I can enforce Title fifteen with, if we know who ownership is. Who those animals belong to. We can also follow up on dog bite, or animal bite situations under Indiana health codes. But as far as dealing with strays, bottom line is, we don't have anywhere to go anymore.
Now, you can confirm or deny this, I heard a rumor, which is, you know, that's always rumors, we were taking them out to Dr. Stoffler's for a while. Someone gave their passcode to the door, and they threw an animal inside the door in that room, our relationship with them, is that my understanding? Or not stare, I'm sorry, stare, out here with the Y G M.
The Delphi Animal Hospital. That's my understanding, that someone, right or wrong, provided the passcode, and there was an animal placed in there in the past that we, in essence, did not have permission to, to leave that animal there, so.
Was there actions taken on that, can we tell you your name?
I did not, it did not involve any sheriff's duties.
Because I think they got a very nice facility, I think they can manage that. So, have you tried to enter a contract with them?
I, we are, due to our early year situations, I've not had an opportunity to follow up with Dr. Starrett. And so, it is on my agenda, but we intend on having a meeting to see, well, we might know what type of resolve we might be able to reach. But obviously, no guarantees that they don't have space.
I don't want DART getting in trouble, I agree, keeping them at her house, and being fined. And then, to me, it's a conflict of interest, if she works at animal control, and she does DART, is she using our equipment to do any of this? But, you know, that could be a conflict of interest to make.
I will tell you, I've not, because I've heard that before about using our truck to do this, no, I use a lot of our, I used, my, my first got hired in as an animal patrol, I told them I have a lot of my own equipment. I have always, since I was a kid, always have taken care of animals, and.
I'm not a human.
Okay, I just wanna be very, very clear that I.
I'm just saying, the possibilities are there, and I'm just trying to protect you.
Well, I, I understand, I just wanna be very clear that a lot of the stuff I, I get and use is of my, of my, of my own personal past, and now of DART, because I have been very, very cautious about that.
So after the five days, county has nothing to do with the animals, is that my understanding?
Is that one?
They're supposed to be used a lot.
Supposed to be, yes, that's, that's what I've been told, is that five days she's.
So, and you go pick them up?
And you go pick them up and use DART?
Is that right?
Yes.
So, has DART came up with a price on what they would charge to house these dogs?
So, actually, if, so if you're not able to provide the funding for DART, are, that was my next question, are we able to bill the county at a cost of fifteen dollars a day? Which is reasonable from other counties than how they charge per day for a five-day hold. So after, and although, with that fifteen dollars a day, also include all medical costs that is in, in that five days, so rabies and their basic shots.
So you're only gonna hold for five days? So, you have a facility, it's five days, and you guys pick them up, and it's five days a year?
You hold them, if, if you were to come to us directly, I guess, they'd be held under the county for five days. But they still have to be, they still have to be taken care of, obviously. Because then the name changes over, they become property of DART, and then we can move them where we need to move them to.
After the five days?
After five days, yes.
So, seven, five dollars for five days, per animal?
Plus the, they have to have their shots, because they can't, they need to have their shots, which I have been, keeps, I keep, other than rabies, I just don't buy, buy vet. Rabies has to be done by vet, no matter where you're at. But I do keep shots on hand for me, for dogs I have, and I administer those myself, those are usually around thirteen dollars.
Name, we've been, correct?
Yes.
Which can't do in the regular, you've got a license, but.
And like Clinton County, like our animal control officer, when she picks up a dog, she takes it to the Humane Society, and then that's when the dog becomes the Humane Society property. But we, the Humane Society itself has to hold it for five days for it to be claimed, and if it's not claimed after that five days, it becomes the Humane Society's, it's in their custody. So like, if she, let's, and put it to perspective, if she picked up an animal, on animal control, brought it to DART, then you can DART, hold it for five days, and then bill the county for five days if it's not gonna be picked up.
I think we need to take a look, still, here with the sheriff, I don't. Whatever, he can contact, you can try to enter a contract. I don't know what your budget is for the animal control, for personnel and holding, but it's, it's limited, I don't have the numbers here in front, I think that it's, it's relevant, but.
Do you have money in the animal control to pay this expense?
To animal control, I don't have any idea what the, what the budget is in animal control part of it. I don't keep track of the, the county budget, of the animal control, I don't, nobody gives me that stuff.
I have, obviously, I have a monthly budget up there.
But I don't believe we have anything in there.
For what?
Shots, or. That goes. Housing.
There's one light item entitled professional services, so that may, the other thing I would bring up, and this may be a sticky point with certain people within the community, but. Personally, I don't think taxpayers should be involved with cats. I think that's a responsibility of either, I mean, it's a county involved, or, but, you know, personally, I don't, I'm not aware of an ongoing cat issue in the county, per se. But rather, in some of our incorporated and smaller towns in the community. So, I think we've got enough issue with canines that.
I thought we only did canines, were we doing cats, too?
No, we're not, not, not county, county is not, but I, I'm just bringing that up in general, that I don't think the county taxpayers should be paying for cat issues.
Well, to me, I don't think we need to be, in my opinion, that tax dollars should be spent on somebody else's responsibility.
Right.
I understand a dog can get loose, because it happened to me the other day, I got a puppy, it took off.
And we've had issues with people dumping dogs out in county, we all know that.
Right, exactly.
You know, and that, that frustrates me more.
And that's the issue where they can destroy, or harm another people, or another animal. So I think where we need to start at, I'm just thinking for myself, is that, start back with the sheriff, top dog here, to find out where he can contract with a, a place. And you probably don't have any money for this budget, so move to the next year's budget, and you just have to do monthly, monthly basis on if we can, DART can actually bill him for a few days.
I think your first step is, since he's your supervisor for animal control, if you guys need to talk and see actually what you want to do, I mean, he should be involved.
Right, and we, you know, I talked with the, before, with the sheriff before, about where I go, where, you know, I've asked, you know, what we do, and, we don't, don't have an answer, don't have any, so that's why I was asking, does the county, can the county help in any case, you know? Yeah, we know, we don't, don't, don't do cats as far as like the, the feral cats running around. However, recently, there was a lady who passed away, was passed for five days, and in her house, there was, there was a dog box here, I mean. But I find out a week later that there was two cats in this house, too, that I just left behind, you know, I was gonna go and do cats, well, I didn't, I didn't, no, you can't even say you left cats behind, guys, you know? It's a starving house, that's, that's wrong, so I went back out there to go get them, so, yeah, so those, those are certain, certain circumstances, I'm gonna go out and get them, and that should be all in county, I, I think, you can't say they were put behind, since this are.
Off the top of your head, how much is it gonna take to get your trailer?
Um, I'm, so I'm, I'm trying to get some, little grant, trying to get to five thousand, and I'm trying to get some donations from Ovech National.
Right, that's not a question, how much is it gonna take to get your trailer? You gotta figure it off off your head.
Five to seven thousand.
Could we use?
How much is it?
Five to seven thousand.
Seven thousand, okay, I'm, I'm not understanding what the trailer is gonna be for.
Go to house the animals?
It can house, it can temporary house animals.
It'll house animals in the trailer?
In the trailer, yeah, it'll be climate controlled. And my goal originally was that it be more of a, be your red cross for animals, we can have, have it set up in there, with the climate control, to go places. It can also be set up on location somewhere, it could, whether it be my house or next to a, next to the nature site, or wherever, wherever we go with it, to put the animals in there, instead of in my house. And as long as somebody can go in and take care of them, they're in, they'll be a cage, it's like they wouldn't in, in anywhere else. But I'm working on this, getting them.
They don't have any run to go in, or anything like that.
Not a run in the cage, no, but it'd be, it'd be temporary.
Yeah, totally, because it's not ideal to house a dog in there, as like a shelter, it's temporary, so five days at most, is what I would say from the Humane Society's perspective.
And you guys are taking them out and walking them, or.
Oh, yeah.
But my question would be, I don't think you can house it, once you get your house, I don't think you're.
No, I have other places, I've got lots of people volunteer, have places to go, and.
I mean, I think you guys are gonna, are right to think.
I'm trying.
You're willing to help the county out.
Well, that's the thing, too, is there's a lot of things that, that five oh one C three can do to help the county, like, like T N R program for the feral cats, that the county doesn't wanna, or think, like, what it doesn't wanna do. We can do that, you know, I, we can help out on, on cats that the county doesn't wanna do. You know, I, if we work together, I guess, we can go a little bit with the animals, not just euthanize everything, or just, we can try to help them out, we need to give the animals some help. But, the first start, the first, first step is to, right now, the immediate, immediate is, you know, going somewhere with them, or doing some funding, get this trailer going.
Well, that falls back on that man with the bad news, just to get that going, because it's gonna be his choice to either keep the program or get rid of it. And right now, if we don't have a place to go with them, then we probably just go to eliminate the program, until we can find somebody, that would probably be what I would do, if I was in his position. Because it's nothing but a headache, but then again, you put the public in safety if the dog's running around.
I have a question, do you try to find who owns the dogs, or the cats? I mean, like that lady that passed away, did you call any relatives to?
Her relatives were out of, were out of state. Yes.
I just wondered.
Yes, I, we, I make every effort I can to find owners of them.
I made sure.
I can't, well, I think you have a professional, they, or.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Ted, is that feasible?
Yes.
And it mine?
Yes.
Yeah, I just thought of something sitting there, moving forward, I potentially with a plan here. And, and not saying this is the right way to go, but I will still research into trying to find a location that may take our strays. Obviously, I'm gonna try and stay as local as possible, within reason, driving distance, so to say. If for some reason I come back empty-handed. I guess a suggestion I might have is that we suspend the county's aspect of the animal control, and again, potentially enter into a contract with DART, or any other program that's willing to come on board. and again, potentially enter into a contract with Dart or any other program that's willing to come onboard and assist the county. I think what it boils down to, like many situations throughout the county, is having the facilities and the staffing to address this problem. So, but I, again, I'm willing to sit down with local veterinarians and see what kind of resolve we might build to reach.
Thank you. Well, I came onto the council in nineteen ninety-six, we were arguing over animal control.
Yeah.
And it's been a, you know, we've had a solution and no solution and has a solution and no solution, all these years. It'd be nice for us to figure out how to handle this, get it done, get it done right. Now Steve has brought up about economic development, like we have to amend our budget or put it into next year's budget. And that would have to be approved by the council to put it in, it has to be approved by the, I don't know. I don't, I, we need a, we need a solution.
Do you have a budget line under professional services?
Yes, sir.
Do you have a professional services line item in the sheriffs?
Sheriffs, it's animal control under the sheriff's budget, yes.
Maybe the short-term solution is to get a contract going to Dart, that's funded by that line item. There's no council money involved, then put the question for the trailer, if that's, if that's going to help to edit.
How much money is in it, is it going to-
Well, not, not, not from, no, I wasn't, I was suggesting that edit to use for the trailers. And the contract for Dart to go to professional, professional services to the sheriff's budget.
You said you have a place where maybe, I don't know, you said the dog runs, that like the people build barns? You guys, do you have a place to put one of those?
Land for one of those, like there's a barn that we can house animals?
Not currently, no, but like people have offered many ways, and you don't hear, you know, they said the trailer probably here, put dogs up for a while, depending on how they just are set up and all-
Those barns are about seven or eight thousand.
Yeah, they're expensive, and that's another thing, and maybe, I don't know what kind of property you as the county owns itself, it would be available for maybe a building to go up or something like that. But if I can just bring up like Clinton, just going back to Clinton County, how we're set up, our animal control officer is through the Humane Society. So our animal control officer is not through our sheriff's department, they contract us from the Humane Society. So like Toby was saying, I think that's what you were kind of saying, is basically take that line item but move it to where animal controls contracted through Dart. Is that kind of what you're saying, kind of, somewhat, yeah?
Professional service line is in the animal control budget, if not the sheriff's.
That'd be correct for us, able to bill it down.
Sheriff has to prove what you spend out of there.
Right, so, but you see that we would, we keep all the streets, we have a contract, and every house with all of its kind of dollars. So-
Pay it out of that professional services.
So, and with me doing it, I mean, I know, I know what it costs, and it's been typical to have dogs, you know, but if I could do some of this myself, like the, giving the shots is thirteen dollars, I'd not do that much. I'm not going to gouge anybody or anything, I would, I'd try to do it.
I don't know how that works.
Yes, you can contract to do that, as long as we get a driver, it's approved by the-
I can take that contract, that whole contract, of course, if you can, and look at that and kind of modify it to, you know, they use that food and I can modify it into, uh, would be as, twenty, thirty, nine, a dog don't, you know, some difference.
You've opened the door here, we have to all this been opened up, so. And like I say, it has been thought about before me, before nineteen ninety-six, so. Thank you, we'll just have to, you keep after us, we're, I'm thinking about it, we'll work with Toby.
I appreciate it, animals have their voice, he says that's what we're here, what I'm here for, so.
And that's what I was mainly wanting to do today, is just open the door to get something, thanks, maybe moving forward, to get some solution.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Ted, do you have things to bring up to us?
Yes, first thing is on American Rescue Plan, Barnes and Thornburg, I hope to get it before the last meeting if you can get it to me, is the engagement for them to assist them. The transaction including the, the plan related to the replacement of revenue, lost revenue and the broadband project, so there's, there's a topic here. That is not within the scope of their, of their engagement to advise, to monitor on compliance with our regulations, so that needs to be approved. And the target is April fourth for having a drafted plan that you could adopt utilized the replacement of revenue, if you were testing the revenue, that's the first step, good plan. So, need your approval on that engagement, to get going on that.
Do you have a question on that?
Well, it's hourly rate, it's whatever, because there are too many moving parts for them to give us and not to receive because it involves parties other than just the county, it involves PDC, it involves and the number of, the number of meetings and conferences and so forth, and also would involve a provider, the, the internet service provider too.
Because it doesn't seem what they're going to charge this amount?
No, their, their hourly rates are in an attachment that is like six pages long, you know? That, that came, I sent, I think I sent it to Ted, I don't know if the-
Yeah, I gave him a copy of what you sent.
Yeah, that's, you know, it's, it's whatever their hourly rates are for the, for the personnel, and this would be paid out of with its funds, it would be paid by separate county levies.
But how do they know, I don't really want to bleed this blind, can we set a limit?
I don't know what limit you would set on, you know, I don't know.
You wouldn't put like the hourly rates on different things, like when we have it, like our personnel advisory board, they put different rates?
Oh, yeah, that, I think that is in the attachment, there is another attachment, they, instead of putting it in the letter itself, it's, it's in a separate document, I can put, yeah. It depends on whether it's done by a partner or associate, and, well, I have to write. This is going to be hopefully over with fairly quickly, I would think by the end of the year.
But it's kind of like the county council attorney, he has it written out, associate comes, this much, you know? I mean, they're coming, we have to, we've got the money and the money.
There is a, I don't, I'm going to have to send that separate, it's a separate document that lists all that, it's not in there, it's referred to in, in the engagement.
So should we engage in this now, or?
I think we need to do it.
It'll be done by April fourth.
Yeah, if we're going to get our three million dollars, we need to start this. We're going for that.
People already got their money, they're not giving the money.
They're just going to give us guy on those houses.
Well, the transaction that involves the EDC and the broadband provider is, is going to also need to be documented, that, that's not part of the ARP, that's, that's a separate thing.
Are you going to cap on it or something, like?
I don't know what cap is, I don't think they know, honestly, it's, is your council attorney that way? Just hourly rates? Well, I, I can get their schedule.
There's a certain amount in their budget that they, they have, up to a certain amount, so I, I don't know, I'm just, I was just wondering.
Tracy, any comment or questions?
Has there been a discussion yet, this doesn't include of like when the money gets paid back and where that money is going to be reversible to, correct?
That will be included with what, with what they do.
So where is that money going back to, the county?
That hasn't been, that hasn't been decided yet.
That was my original question.
Right.
When, I mean, this is not deciding where that money goes back to.
No.
Well, they, they started off that they didn't want them to go back to EDC, then they said they would want half of the, the further progress and it would only be used for that broadband area. So if we give them the one five, we get half of it back, we give them half, which to me is still a pretty decent deal. We're only paying a hundred and, well, it'll be two hundred and-
That's my respective question, is if you've decided how the, the replacement of money and where that's going, where the money is.
It has not been decided yet.
Where do you want it to go?
Back to the county.
All of it?
And then they can come and ask for the disbursement, the funds when they need it. Because you're not sure when they're going to do the rest of the, the, the people that need, you don't know, it could be two years, it could be four years, it needs to stay in the county and generate.
Well, I believe Jake said that too, what you just said, but to make the process go faster, they've had to come in, have to wait thirty days and all that, if part of it was in their account and only used for broadband, is there a difference there? If they're going to come back and ask for it, I mean, if they already have it ready available and they can just say, well, we don't have to wait on the commissioners, then we don't have to wait on the council, we have half of this, we can just go ahead and use it as long as it's used just for broadband?
I think that was talked at that meeting, and it was talked that they come back and re-appropriate it, you know, and re-appropriate it.
I see both sides.
I just think that the, the money's going to be sitting there and they really don't know an amount they're going to need. And it could sit there for an unknown amount of time to where it could be maybe generating interest for the county.
I'm going to, can we, use it to, will we get it back for getting interest? In our funds?
Right now, it's sitting, it is sitting in this, uh, savings, interest, sparing account.
Right now?
Right.
Okay.
And I'm getting much, but maybe some.
Because maybe EDC can get more than we can? I don't know, well, that's, that's something I have to decide.
Funds that be the same amount.
Right. I'm going to make a motion to enter a contract.
A motion to second into the contract, all in favor, say aye.
Looks like just a few, you're in here.
You're like we're all three, so we're all three.
Oh, I'll put a glass of that. How many we need?
Two.
Two.
And this will be paid out of professional services out of your budget? Or where would it be paid out of?
Where's it going to be paid out of, Ted, do you know? Does it come out of the art money?
It will be paid eventually, I, I think it'll be-
This will be burdened in extent?
It'll be reimbursed in existing-
Professional services, I think, ladies and gentlemen, agree?
So you want that in your motion for professional services and commissioners?
Yes.
I have a note for you, read later. I can't read it now? Yeah.